Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. As a reminder, this meeting will be broadcast and recorded. I will call the Board of Selectmen February 24th, 2025. Meeting to order at 6:00 p.m., 3rd floor of the Town Hall. Our first appointment is at 6:05. So I'm going to go through a couple of our agenda items to get to our appointment time to let everybody get into the room. And just acknowledging, Greg and BZ, I do see that you're online. BZ, do you want to unmute? Make sure you can hear me clearly.
All right. I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay. I will entertain a motion. Actually, I will make a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $920,127.58. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's February 10th, 2025, open meeting and executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the Selectmen's February 14th, 2025, open meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve and sign the memorandum of understanding for the seniors' on-the-go healthy aging transportation grant among Essex, Manchester, and Gloucester.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to accept the resignation of Kurt Seibert from the Finance Committee effective October 28th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to appoint Kurt Seibert to the Council on Aging for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/2026.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to appoint Chris Pellegrini to the Conservation Commission for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is considering consideration for somebody to represent the Board of Selectmen on the Community Preservation Committee, and if not a selectman, somebody in our place. I know that you are considering doing that, Alva. Did you?
Yeah, I think I feel like it's just too much with everything going on this year.
Okay.
So maybe another year, but this year.
So Pam, if we can table this and bring it back, and Alva and I and Peter will start working on talking to members of the community to see if there's somebody interested in I will make a motion to approve the request from Rose and Dennis Burnham to rent the Grove Cottage on Sunday, June 8th, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for a private bridal brunch.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to approve the all of the licensing as listed on page two for the senior commercial shellfish permit and commercial shellfish permits as listed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the one-day wine and malt license for the Essex County Green Belt Jane Rumril Cox Reservation Barn, 82 Eastern Ave., for use on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Did you have a question on that, Alva?
So this is an addition. This is like not art in the barn. This is an addition. It's a Thursday, it looks like.
Um, do you have the...
It's a special event.
Okay.
Special event. Okay. We have one minute, so I will do my reminders. The first reminder is that the Board is posted to observe a meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee's Finance Subcommittee this Wednesday, February 26th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. here, 3rd floor auditorium of the Town Hall at 30 Martin Street. And then the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., 3rd floor auditorium, Town Hall, 30 Martin Street. And finally, the Board is posted to participate in a public hearing to be held by the Planning Board on March 5th, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. concerning proposed changes to the Essex zoning bylaw. It is 6:04. Vicky, if you want to join us at the podium, or you know what? Stay in the chair in case we need you. If we do need you, I'll have you go up, and if you are going to speak, we'll just have you speak six inches away from the microphone. Perfect.
Something completely different.
But hang on one second. Yes, however, let's wait until after the appointment, okay? It's something not related to Tilly, correct?
Not related.
Okay. So it is 6:05. The Board of Selectmen does have an appointment with Vicky Citaldo to discuss a recent violation of a dog order. Joining us this evening is the Town of Essex Animal Health Inspector Pam Stone. I'm going to ask Pam to just go through the history with us about the past violations. We also have the Town Administrator Brennan Zubricki, who is well-versed in these violations, as well as Town Council Greg Corbo, joining us online to guide the Board through the discussion. Brennan, is there anything you want to add before I ask Pam to just go through a brief history?
No, I think we should start with the history, and then we can determine if Greg or I need to add anything from there.
Perfect. Thank you. So Pam, when you speak, same situation, just about six inches from the microphone, so you can be captured. Perfect. Thank you.
So I've issued total five quarantines for Tilly, and the first two were in 2020. The first dog that was reported bitten was a small dog that came in for medical treatment to our office that, on the record, it said it looks like a small eyelid tumor got knocked off. It was a minor injury. The second dog was a bigger dog, didn't seek medical attention at any office. Fast forward to 2021, there was two dog bites, one in October and one in December. Both of those came in to our office for medical treatment. One didn't need any treatment at all. They just wanted to make sure there was no puncture wounds, and there was not. The second one had a minor puncture wound in the back of the neck. So that was four previous quarantines that I had on Tilly. The most recent one was a few weeks ago, and she got in another dogfight with a smaller dog, and they came into the animal hospital with a puncture wound behind an ear. And that was 2025. So basically, she had two quarantines in 2020, two more in 2021. In the meantime, Amy sent some letters out to Vicky, and Tilly has been out of trouble, basically, until this recent occurrence where Tilly was on a leash walking behind her house.
Can you just get a little bit closer to the microphone? Thank you.
So the recent incident, Tilly was on a leash, walking behind her house with Vicky. She did not have a muzzle on, which was part of the original order.
Okay. Brennan, do you want the Board to ask questions of Pam? Do you think it's appropriate for me to have Vicky fill in the blanks about why Tilly didn't have a muzzle on, since that was the most recent order that the Board issued?
Yeah, I think it's important. I'll point out that the standing order of the Board was if there was an additional problem, that that could end in euthanasia. But I believe that we're going to hear from our Animal Health Inspector Pam Stone that that's not necessarily what needs to be done. However, I think Town Council should let the Board know about what their options are here, given that the order said one thing, but there could actually be a different recommendation made tonight.
Thank you. Greg, do you want to unmute?
Yes, thank you. Good evening through you, Madam Chair. So the actions of the Animal Inspector and the Board of Selectmen were taken in accordance with Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as well as the Town's bylaws. And the state statute provides significant penalties for individuals who have failed to comply with an order of restraint issued pursuant to the statute. The statute also provides a remedy for appeal to the District Court, which was not a, which the dog owner did not avail themselves of in this case. So according to the statute, if an owner or keeper of a dog is found in violation of an order issued under this section, the dog shall be subject to seizure and empowerment by law enforcement or animal control, provided that there is notice to the owner. And upon receipt of that notice, the owner is required to immediately surrender the licenses and tags in the person's possession, and they will be prohibited from owning a dog in the Commonwealth for a period of five years. In addition to those remedies, there are also criminal penalties in the form of fines and the possibility of imprisonment. Given that the statute says that the dog is subject to being surrendered, and the owner cannot re-license a dog in the Commonwealth, the only option then left would be for the Town to dispose of the dog either through putting it up for adoption or euthanizing it. Given the history of this dog, it is highly unlikely that the dog would be adoptable, and that would then leave you with the only option of euthanasia. That being said, as with any other type of enforcement, the Board has discretion as to, you know, how it wishes to proceed. And so, in my opinion, there are four options that the Board can take this evening, and we can, you know, modify these however you see fit. So the first option would be to enforce the statute as written and require the owner to surrender the dog within seven days and authorize the Animal Control Department to euthanize it. The second option would be to initiate a criminal prosecution, which, as I said, could result in fines and/or imprisonment, but that's a process that is up to the Criminal Court and the District Attorney's Office, not really something you have a lot of control over. The third option would be to provide yet another warning after your last warning that was previously issued, and as part of that warning, issue a more restrictive order such as prohibiting the dog from being allowed outside, anywhere but on the owner's property, and prohibiting it from being taken off of the owner's property, you know, unless it's being taken off in a vehicle, and it not be permitted to be walked anywhere in the Town of Essex. And then finally, you have the option of just not taking any action at this time. So, you know, that's what I see. I'm happy to answer any further questions. So I'll leave it to you to discuss the matter further.
Thank you, Attorney Corbo.
Can I just ask one question as far as to the Town of Essex? If anything should happen to this, where this dog does something again, is the Town liable?
Well, I would argue that the Town is not liable. Under Massachusetts general laws, the Town has certain immunities from liability, one of which is the failure to prevent a harm caused by a third party as long as the Town did not make any specific assurance of safety. So here, you know, if this dog does bite someone again, that is not a harm that is caused by the Town. That is a harm that is caused by the owner's failure to properly control their dog. And in my opinion, that is something that you would not be subject to liability for. But of course, you know, if someone were to file a lawsuit, I can never guarantee what the outcome would be.
Thank you, Attorney Corbo. Do you have any other questions for Attorney Corbo, Alva?
I do not.
Okay. Vicky, if you want to join us at the microphone, because I have questions for you, or at least So we're obviously here because of the seriousness of the accusation about Tilly attacking another dog. Clearly, we've heard from Pam that this is, there's been five attacks at this point. I know that I was on the Board during the December 27th, 2021 hearing where we issued the order and I signed to the letter about having Tilly on a leash and having her muzzled. And it sounds like for the last four years, things have gone well. Can you provide a little bit of context as to why Tilly wasn't muzzled this time?
Well, two things. She constantly pulls the muzzle off, so that's one thing. And the other is that in this instance, because of the snow and the ice, we're walking in the, you know, in the woods. And this other person came up with no visible dog. We, none of us, I mean, I was there with another person and their dogs. We had three dogs. I already have two dogs. And the other person didn't see this other dog, and this gentleman was, I couldn't, I wouldn't say threatening, but he was, he had walking sticks, and he was moving very I saw the person, didn't see the dog. I'm holding Tilly, and then I slipped. When I slipped on the ice, Tilly got away from me. Tilly saw the dog before any of the humans did, and, but that's, you know, yes, she attacked the dog. And then the gentleman in question then was really kind of threatening in the sense that he was, kept saying he was going to stab all of us, the dogs, the other person that was with me and me. I never saw any evidence of a knife or anything he could use to stab us, but it was a bit disconcerting. He would not let me check on his dog. We exchanged information and went on our merry way. That's the extent of that. Now, since then, and because of the quarantine order, I have been keeping Tilly on our property, which is not a hardship, because it's a little difficult now with all of the snow and ice. But we have enough land where it's easy to walk her on. She's always on a leash. She's never loose. The only time she's off a leash is when she's on her run or in her pen. So this was just an anomaly more than anything else. She is extremely, I mean, almost overaffectionate with people. She has never shown any kind of animosity towards a human being, and I never, I don't understand what sets her off. I think she's just being very protective. That's the only thing I can think of, because it's, she has, she has dog friends that she's fine with, small dogs, big dogs. I have a Newfoundland. She's used to big dogs, but I don't know what sets her off. I haven't been able to figure that one out.
So she's never attacked a human. She's only ever attacked dogs, and it's not specific dogs. It's not a particular dog. It's just dogs. If she sees a dog, she goes at them.
Well, it depends on the dog. I mean, it's not...
Can I just ask you, when you, you say you have two dogs, so do you always walk the two dogs together?
Not always, because my NuFy sometimes doesn't want to go for a walk.
And I'm just, you know, there's that protecting the brother type of instance.
Right. Now, in this instance, yes, the NuFy was with us, so, and her boyfriend, is what I call him, was also with us. So I, maybe that had something to, I have no idea. I mean, I have talked to trainers and Pam, and everybody's like, she's a dog. We don't know what her thinking is.
Can I just make a comment? So I do want to make a comment when you say, well, it's never attacked a human. And I, my dog has been attacked twice while on leash on my waist. I've also had a dog that attacked other dogs. It's very scary for the owner, whose dog is being attacked, to the point, I almost, I could have had a heart attack if I was in the right frame. It's scary. So I have to say, yeah, it's scary. You can't just say, well, it didn't affect the owner, because it took me a year to walk on Western Ave. again, and that's not right when you live in the town.
No, I did not imply, I did not mean to imply that it was not scary. It was scary for all of us, or at least for me and the other owner. I don't know about my friend who was walking with us, but, you know, I understand that completely.
I think, I mean, I don't think there's a person in this room that doesn't own a dog, and we all love our animals. I mean, I know that we love them like they're our family. It's really difficult to be back in this position, because it was a struggle for me back in 2021 to sit at the table and have to hear this information. But I guess the way I feel is it doesn't matter who you are in town. Enforcement orders are intended to be followed, and it, I think Pam's going to make a recommendation that the Board does not follow through with the Animal Control Officer's recommendation of euthanasia. And knowing that Pam is our Animal Control, Animal Health Inspector, that holds a lot of weight for me. I value her opinion. I value that she's here this evening to speak on behalf of Tilly. However, the enforcement order was signed. It needs to be followed. I can appreciate, Vicky, that you slipped and that you were on the ice and you lost control of a leash. But had Tilly had a muzzle on, she may not have been able to bite that dog. And I get it, she doesn't want to wear the muzzle, she's trying to get it off, so we need to find a better fitting muzzle, I think. And it sounds like she wasn't in a muzzle at that point.
No, she wasn't.
Okay. So for me, and I think we'll talk about it, how you feel, Attorney Corbo laid out our four options: enforcement, surrender in seven days, euthanasia, criminal prosecution, provide another warning, which is what I feel that I'm inclined to do based on, I want to hear that that is Pam's solid recommendation, and then take no action. I don't think taking no action would be a responsible decision of this Board. But Pam, if you would care to, let us know what your recommendation would be as they've been laid out by Attorney Corbo.
So going through the options that were mentioned earlier, you know, taking a dog away from an owner that is now 10 years old is simply not fair to the dog. Rehoming this dog wouldn't be an option. The, and plus, you know, Vicky has another dog, a big lazy Newfoundland that has gotten in no trouble, so to take two dogs, you know, that dog away too is also, I don't think fair to the dogs. I'm always the advocate of the dogs. I don't know, my recommendation, my recommendation is not to euthanize Tilly. It's a final decision, one that you can't take back. I don't think it's fair, under the circumstances, that Tilly gets punished because of a bunch of things that never should have happened in the first place. This gentleman that I talked to today, the last incident, he was very upset. He said he did have a knife, and he said that if he couldn't control the dog, that he would have used it on the dogs. He didn't say anything about using it on Vicky, but he was still upset when I talked to him today. That being said, you know, as Alva would tell you, dogfights are scary. I understand that. I don't know what the solution is. I just don't think euthanasia is the answer.
Okay.
Or to rehome her. I think that would be even, you know, I'd rather see her euthanized than to be rehomed, but I don't think euthanasia, I think it's kind of a harsh punishment for Tilly.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I am aware through prior, you know, cases that I have, that there are trainers who will train a dog on how to wear a muzzle. I do think that it's not something that comes naturally to most dogs, particularly an older dog, and I think that a requirement, in addition to the ones I laid out earlier, that, you know, the dog be trained to use the muzzle would probably make that remedy more effective.
Wonderful. Thank you for the suggestion. So we're here because of the seriousness of a dog attack. We realized that there was an enforcement order to have Tilly in a muzzle and always on a leash. She was on a leash. She was not in a muzzle. I'm in favor of option three, providing another warning with strict guidelines that Tilly is not to be walked anywhere but on her own property, and even on her own property, she must be in a muzzle, because if she, if the leash were to be dropped, she has the ability to run, and if she sees a dog walking by on the street or on a trail, we end up with another dog attack. I like Attorney Corbo's suggestion of having her trained to use a muzzle, so I'm fine with that as well.
My two thoughts were either must be guaranteed it's on a muzzle, or it's not allowed out of the yard, or it just stays in the yard and it's never allowed under the yard. Although you may have a big property, it's, dogs like to sniff everywhere, so that may not be...
But is it fenced? Is your yard, big yard fenced?
My big yard is not fenced, not the whole yard. I've got part of the yard fenced, in a tall fence, so she couldn't jump over it or, you know, break through it. It's not a, it's not an electric fence. It's a hard fence. And then in the front yard, that's in the backyard, in the front yard, then she's on a run, and she can't go anywhere.
But on the run, if a dog came into her yard, she would protect it and potentially attack, even on a run? So in the fenced area, no one could get to her, and she can't get to anybody, but on the run?
Correct.
Okay. So do you have any other questions, or do you want me to make a motion?
No, I mean, I feel like we just either say on a muzzle at all times, anytime she's Backyard, probably not, if it's fenced in. Front yard, if she's on, because you're right. I mean, another dog could think, oh, I'll try this out and go close. And that would be, you know, another instance. But I really do think that it can't be again. This, I think, this is what, third chance, fourth, fifth chance?
Fifth.
Fifth attack.
Fifth attack.
Well, this is only the second time that we've come, I've come before you guys.
She's got five quarantines that...
Yeah. Right. So they haven't all led to a public hearing, but she has five quarantines, so five attacks. So I will make a motion to provide another warning to Mrs. Citaldo to keep Tilly in a muzzle at all times when outside of the residence, unless in the backyard, in a fenced area, and including, on her run, in the front yard, she must be muzzled, and with a strong recommendation to have her trained on how to wear a muzzle and not remove it. Attorney Corbo, before we finish the motion, do you have anything to add to that, or are you comfortable with that motion?
So if I could, Madam Chair, just ask a couple clarifying questions. So this fenced-in area, and is it, like, she mentioned that part of the yard was fenced. I mean, is this area fenced on all four sides?
Yes.
And does it have a gate?
Yes.
And is it, like, does the dog go directly from the house into this fenced-in area?
I'm not sure what you mean by...
Like, do you open a sliding door, and he's in the fenced area? Or does he have to go from the house into the fenced area?
Has to go from the house into the fenced area.
So you must walk him from your house into the fenced area?
Yeah, if she's, if she's going there. I mean, she's also, I also have her, a large back deck that is gated, and then she can just go out on her own. I mean, I open sliding glass doors, she goes out, and this gate, this deck is 12 feet off the ground, so it's not ground level. She can't escape, or another dog can't get in.
But to your point, Attorney Corbo, I think what you're getting at is that she would still need to be muzzled, leaving the back door of the house to get to this fenced area, because there's still a chance she could run.
That, that's correct, Madam Chair. That is what I was getting at. And, you know, the other issue for you to consider is that, you know, gates are not foolproof, and sometimes people leave gates open, or they don't close them all the way. And, you know, if you're allowing the dog to be not muzzled within the fenced-in area, and someone leaves a gate open, you're, you may find yourself in the same, back in the same position.
With the exception is that I'm the only one who would be taking her to the fenced-in area. Michael couldn't get down there even if he wanted to.
Respectfully, Vicky, though, you were also the one that was holding the dog on the leash when you slipped, and she was able to run. So I think we'll amend the motion that says that anytime Tilly is outside of the dwelling, outside of the residential dwelling, she must be in a muzzle.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I? I'm sorry, I have a, I just another comment. So first of all, I would want you to make clear that, that the dog would be not only muzzled, but led on a leash to that... muzzled, but led on a leash to that fenced-in area?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other issue was, you had something about strongly recommend the training. I don't recommend that you use language like that because it's not enforceable. Again, I would recommend that you require training, but if you're not going to require it, you know, it's not enforceable to just say that you recommend something.
Okay. How do you feel about the training?
I, I guess there's a part of me that says, well, unless we're handing her who she has to go to or what, it's still, she's got to do it. And my feeling is, it doesn't matter at this point. If the dog does another bite, it's coming in and we're going to have to euthanize it.
But I think what Attorney Corbo was getting at is that Mrs. Cataldo is saying that Tilly rips off the muzzle. Attorney Corbo is saying there's training to prevent the dog. Pam, you have a comment? Just be close to the microphone.
I can probably help with the muzzle. Of course, being at the Animal Hospital for 40 years, I have quite a bit of experience with muzzles that the dogs can't get off. And there's certain types that they can pant through and they can actually, you know, they do pretty well with them after they get used to them. Some of the muzzles, the dogs hate, and they will just hurt themselves trying to get them off. So I can make some recommendations that, you know, my dog doesn't like toddlers and I have a three-year-old grandson, and whenever he is in the house, she is muzzled. And she's also 10, and she hated it, but she did get used to it, so I could probably help with some of that.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah. You know, we have all sorts of muzzles at the Animal Hospital that she could try and see which one that, you know, Tilly is more comfortable with.
So Attorney Corbo, would you be comfortable if we said that Mrs. Cataldo is required to work with the animal inspector for a proper fitted muzzle and how to use it? Or do you think it should be a certified trainer?
I think that's sufficient. And I would just add to that, that you work with the animal inspector and abide by her decision as to which muzzle to use.
Fine. Okay. Perfect. So my amended motion is to make a motion to provide another warning to Mrs. Cataldo, a more restrictive order that Tilly must be in a muzzle the moment she leaves the residence, always on a leash, and that she will work with animal health inspector Pamela Stone to purchase the proper fitted muzzle and train her how to use it. And that she will not be allowed to walk Tilly in Essex, anywhere in Essex, as long as, until she's on a muzzle and on a leash.
Second?
All those in favor?
Does she have to be on a muzzle in the fenced area?
She has to be in a muzzle.
In the fenced area?
Getting to the fenced area.
Getting to, but not in.
I would just leave her in the muzzle.
I would say leave her in the muzzle.
I would just leave her in the muzzle when she's outside.
Madam Chair, did you, did you just say that she has to be on a leash with a muzzle to be walked somewhere else in Essex? We're saying she can't be walked off of the property, correct?
Not off the property, no. But she has to be on a leash and muzzled to go from her house to the pen. She has a fenced-in pen out back. And what if she runs?
No, I get that. I was just making sure I didn't hear that you were saying that she could walk off the property, muzzled and leashed.
Oh, nowhere else in Essex, did I say? Oh, meaning she cannot walk her anywhere else in Essex?
Okay.
Other than her property, from her back door to the pen? Or if she's on the run in the front yard, she must be muzzled?
Yeah. Okay.
So Madam Chair, can I just try to summarize, make sure I have the whole thing?
Yes.
So not walked anywhere in the town of Essex. Walked on a leash from the house to the pen, and I would suggest, or the house to the run. Always wearing a muzzle when outside and comply with the directions of the animal health officer.
Perfectly said.
Second?
Pam has, Pam has a comment.
I'm sorry. So to have her on a muzzle inside the pen, they cannot drink with a muzzle on, so if she's out, like, on a hot summer day, if she's going to be out there for hours, she either needs to stay in the house or not have the muzzle on, or dehydration could be an issue for Tilly?
I think, given the severity of the situation, she shouldn't be left in the pen for long periods of time. If dehydration's the concern, she should be brought back in to have a drink. Unfortunately, we're, we're trying to meet in the middle with a happy medium of not euthanizing the dog, so, but to keep everybody else safe.
And just as an aside, I never leave her on the run or in the pen if I'm not home.
Okay. Thank you, Vicki. So Greg, you captured that well. Beesee, I know that we're going to be sending a letter. Do you feel that that was captured well for the motion?
Yes. And when I get back, I'll put a letter together that further modifies the original order of the board. And for Attorney Corbo, this, does this modified order come with a chance for an appeal? Or it really doesn't? The order stands and this is just the board using its clemency?
That, that's correct. Because the board, you know, is finding that there's a violation here, and there is no appeal from a finding of violation. And so, yes, this is just a modification of the previously unappealed order.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So that meeting is done. And Vicki, I know you had a question. Attorney Corbo, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you joining us this evening.
Oh, sure.
Vicki does have a question for the board, so I'm going to let her, it's not regarding Tilly. So you don't have to stay on, but you're welcome to. Vicki, go ahead.
Actually, this is a question about clam licenses. We have had several, very few clam licenses have been issued or applied for. But for the out-of, the non-residents who require a sponsor, when, on their little form, there's the spot, there's the sponsor's name, and then under two lines down there, there's our signatures for the, for the application. In between there, there's a line that says signature. We're not clear whether this is a signature of the sponsor or the clamor.
So I saw, I believe Amy has fixed that application, because I saw a new copy where it looks like, I don't have it with me.
She had the same question this afternoon.
Yeah.
She did? Okay.
We talked about this this morning, so...
I will pop in tomorrow morning and see Amy to tell her what the vision was in my head when we updated this new form.
Okay. So the new form is not in our office yet?
Amy had updated it, and there was a concern. I know that we had a resident that used it and was confused about providing a license, so I need to look at the new form. The issue in the past, Vicki, just so you know, last year, we had somebody who applied for a non-resident license, and the first application we got was missing a piece of information. So I sent it back and said, I want a copy of your driver's license. Oh, no. I'm sorry. It had the wrong year at the top. So they filled out the new application and they forged it. So we are now requiring the sponsor to provide proof that they're actually sponsoring somebody. So that was the reason for the updated application, but the signature line that you're talking about, I need to see it. I'm not looking at it. So I will come see it with Amy and clarify what the intent was.
But Madam Chair, you need the signature of both people anyway.
Right. There should be both on there.
Well, there are not. There's not room for...
If they don't both sign it, it's not valid.
Well, there's no, there's no line for both signatures, just so you know.
Okay. Well, that's what, that's what we're going to end up doing. You need both parties to sign that.
So they're going to have to adjust the form?
Oh.
In order for...
Fine.
Both signatures.
So we'll have to have new forms made, because these are, these are, there's like carbon in between there that you can, because they get the original, we keep the carbon.
Just have people sign one, one above the other. I mean, it's, it's fine.
Okay. All right.
Till the next forms can be printed.
Yeah.
Because you need it clear. I thought they were doing it from online.
Oh, no. This, this never can be done online.
So there is a form online, because Amy, between my...
Yeah, the, but, well, when they come in to get their license, they have to have the, all the paperwork and everything. They don't submit that.
So if you have a carbon copy form, Brendan's recommendation is just to have them both sign it. But the online form, I know Amy was able to update that within 10 minutes of asking her. When Brendan sent her the last email, she did it lickety-split, so...
Yeah, she's good.
She's great. We will make sure that she updates the online form so it's clear, and then we'll just have you guys have two people sign the duplicate form.
Fine.
Perfect.
That's one of the things we were both, well, whose signature is supposed to be here this morning? So...
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Vicki. Pam, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We appreciate your time. So Brendan, we are at 6:40. We do not have our appointment with the Finance Committee until 7:30. So I'm going to recommend that we go into executive session. If you'd like to bring us into executive session, we'll roll call the...
Yes. I'm going to recommend that the board move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategy with the Afmi union, and that the chairman declared that an open discussion of this matter would be detrimental to the board's bargaining strategy and position. And further, that the board invite the chairman of the Board of Public Works and the chairman of the Finance Committee to participate in the executive session, and that the board will be reconvening this meeting in regular session after the executive session has been concluded.
I will make a motion to go into executive session at 6:41 PM.
Inga Harrow, yes?
Ruth Perrine, aye. Great. Thank you, everybody, for patiently waiting. I apologize that we were a little longer than anticipated. My sincere apologies to the Finance Committee. They had a 7:30 appointment to discuss the fiscal year 2026 operating and capital budget proposals. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Chair Harris. When the Finance Committee speaks, if you could just please try to speak six inches away from the microphone so that people viewing this at home can hear us clearly and that it's captured for future recordings.
Perfect. So we're in the middle of the budget development for FY '26. This year, we have a few items that will not be resolved immediately. We have two union contract negotiations, one with the police and one with Afmi, which we are in the middle of negotiating both of those contracts. So clearly, we have some things there that we won't be able to budget in until we're complete with that process. This year, we approached our budgeting process a bit differently. We have a new town accountant, Michaela Nolan, and we've worked closely with her and the department heads to, A, have more transparency in their budgets, and B, to help them to manage their budgets on a weekly basis by providing them with weekly, monthly, and year-to-date reports so that they can concentrate on the business of running their departments and they don't have to run sub-accounting. And I will say that the feedback has been great. Michaela's doing a great job, and we have departments reporting back that they are able to manage their budgets via the reports from the town accounting system and not use any sub-accounting in their departments. This year, we asked for more visibility in every line item so that the Finance Committee could better understand what was in each line item, and having them memorialize that is very helpful in looking at who we're using for subcontractors and what we're using for certain expenses in line items. And also having that the department has having ability to expand line items if they wanted to track more, in more detail, certain things, in particular, over time. Maybe in the police is very challenging, and they were looking for some additional line items, which you can only do once a year. We have challenges this year. The increase in the gas and electric, electricity prices are pushing our budgets. We also have a large increase in our healthcare number at this moment. Stay tuned. Our big investment this year will be in the fire department. The fire department is, as most people know, a call fire department. And in order to stay a call fire department, we really needed to look at the wage and salary schedule and how we man our, our fire station. So under the direction of our new fire chief, Christian Hassel, we've been working very closely with the budget development of helping to sustain the call fire department and fight off a full-time fire department for hopefully many years to come. We are also in the transition stage. We have a new police chief that's been selected. Chief Francis will be retiring in April, and Tom Shamshak was selected as the police chief, so there's contract to be negotiated there. We also have word that we may be looking at the retirement of one more management role in the DPW, so that will be another line item. Of course, always our really big story is the school budget. So we have received the school budget. The school budget, their big driver this year is health insurance. But the superintendent of schools has decided to seat a number-crunching group, which will be meeting this Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock here at Town Hall, in which town leaders and the finance subcommittee of the school committee and the superintendent and the finance director will be meeting together with town leaders from Essex and Manchester to discuss a path forward for the FY '26 budget. I'm going to have Ben talk a little bit about what we think that's going to look like.
All right. Is this good?
Perfect.
So I think the, just, I mean, the, the school budget is about half of the town of Essex's overall operating budget, and it's been subject to several revisions over the course of the last couple of months from when it was first presented. The most recent revision is February 12th, where for the town of Essex, the apportionment comes in at an 8.64% increase. And as Jody just said, it's really, it boils down to two key components. One is the health insurance, which is coming in at an increase of 27%. And then the other big piece is the 6.2% increase in the teachers' personnel cost year over year. And so I think our key objective on Wednesday with this number-crunching group is to really kind of dig down in and understand exactly what's driving these numbers. Just for example, the teacher, the, the percentage change in the, in the teacher salaries line, how much of it, that assumes a flat headcount, and it's coming in at plus 6.2%. How much of that is collectively bargained? What are the contractual obligations in here? Because if you assume that the healthcare plus the collectively bargained line items, if you just isolate those and you flatline everything else, we're still beyond our levy limit of 2.5%. So there's just not really enough information in this to be able to pull apart and say, well, what really are the control levers in terms of figuring out, you know, what the actual override amount would need to be and what are the drivers of that? So, you know, I think that's, that's what our goal is for Wednesday. We've come up with a bunch of questions, just in terms of dissecting these numbers that, I mean, it's a number-crunching group, right? So I mean, that's what we're seeking to do, is really to kind of get a handle on that. But ultimately, we're going to have to come down to, you know, a number that, that we can get behind. And so that's the goal.
We'll be seeking some more clarity and transparency on, on some of the revenue... We'll be seeking some more clarity and transparency on, on some of the revenues and the expenses in, in particular areas of the school department. I think we really, over the last few years, have been trying to more fully understand the budget, what the budget drivers are. And I think that this is going to be a great opportunity for us to really dig in as a team and get the answers that we're looking for so that we can find a path moving forward.
Great. Alva, do you have any questions for the Finance Committee?
I do not. Sorry, I do not.
And the Finance Committee does meet again this Thursday evening at 7:00 PM, second floor stage. So if anybody wants to join the Finance Committee for, I know that the fire chief is coming before you that evening.
Yes.
And so if they want to hear more of that discussion or anything else that's on the agenda, please feel free. It's an open meeting. We would love to have more participation so that people can follow the budget process from beginning to end, so that there's no surprises on town meeting floor and to understand the drivers. So thank you all.
I just have a couple of questions, if I may.
Certainly.
First, the budget does not include the fact that we're probably going to see an increase in our website hosting platform, which I'm going to explain in more detail for the selectmen later in this meeting. But just for the Finance Committee, there's going to be an increase there that we don't have the value of yet. We were going to be upgraded, the short story is we were going to be upgraded to a new platform, or the higher, the higher version of the platform we're on now at no cost. And the website vendor is abandoning that platform because it proved to be too difficult. And so now we can come up to a different platform with a cost, so we'll be talking about that. We are waiting to hear on a grant that would be about $30,000 for some network switches that we need to replace. And if we get word that, that we don't get that grant, I'm, I'm very optimistic that we will. We could have to add that in as a capital item. Question on the fact that the fire department had listed that they wanted a new pumper truck in a previous budget cycle. Do we know whether they've made that a hard and fast request for FY26?
They are not going to seek the tank until fall town meeting when we have certified free cash because they're not going to hear back on the grant until August, I believe.
This is for a pumper truck?
Oh, pumper. No, they're not going to be talking about that until next year.
Okay, so that's for '27. And then finally, we talked about that study for the three major town bridges. And I did more research. We have put that on hold because if the school is going to be, at least they're going to look at whether the school should be at Apple Street. It will be important to study the bridges at that time. So I think that's why we didn't want to do that study where we might get at least one of them, if not two, bridges studied as part of the school study. So that's really nothing we need to keep on there right now. And I just wanted to point that out.
Great. Brendan, while we have the Finance Committee, if they have time, we may want to just do your report with them in the room because you've already just literally touched on your first few. The other two that you didn't touch on are going to be super quick. And then that'll get us over to the monetary summaries that they're in the room so we can, they can hear the discussion.
Okay. So on the website platform upgrade, again, we're at, we're on this platform called Drupal. It's the backend that helps edit the website. It's at version seven. That's going end of life. Our vendor was going to simply upgrade all of its clients who didn't want to go to a new product to Drupal 10. They started doing that in other areas of the country and it's been such a bear that they're actually not offering it anymore. The bad news is they want to move us to one of their other platforms, which have been available, you know, for years, except that we were fine with the basic platform. And now we're going to, if we want to stay with them, and I recommend that we do because they're actually the vendor that handles, I would say, 90% of the websites in the Commonwealth and in many other states. Some towns already went to that new platform. We were asked about it, I don't know, about a year ago. And the selectmen agreed with me that, no, as long as they're offering us this basic platform, we don't need to spend any more money on it. Well, now we're being asked to look at, one of them is called, I think, Standard Central and the other one is what?
There's another name for it?
Central Starter and then Web Central. And there are other towns that decided to go to that. I guess the silver lining is, once we get pricing, if we decide to go to one or the other, we're being told that it's going to come to us at about half the price as if had we done it years ago when we were asked about it. I don't know if that's true. I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to really vet that, but stay tuned. That's all I can say because there isn't going to be simple carried forward cost on the website. The municipal fuel depot, we have had our engineer out to the site. We have the police, fire, DPW out to the site. We've come up with a place where we feel that it should be cited and just, was it Friday? This morning, yeah, this morning, we got a, an initial plan from our engineer that shows the layout of the fuel tank system, not where it sits on the site, but it gives the dimensions. And I asked the superintendent of public works to talk with the fire and police because we need to know where the gas filler is on, on each vehicle and determine the circulation pattern around this tank system to be the circulate, generally the circulation where most of, you know, either left or right gas tank, whichever one's most, most common. So we're still working with that. We will have an actual estimate on the construction of the tank system in time for town meeting. Right now, we're hoping that it's 250 or less. The cable franchise agreement, like we've done in the past, we're negotiating with the other three K-TAN communities. Every 10 years, the town has to negotiate a new agreement with Comcast. That's our only cable provider. We negotiate as a group, but there will end up being four separate contracts. And we just sat down last week with 1623 Studios to determine what their needs are. Right now, they're getting about 3.6% of the money that, that Comcast is paying out. And Comcast provides that money by surcharging the user. And the maximum surcharge that Comcast can, can propose is 5%. So the remainder of the money is going to each of the towns for their tech, their tech funds, which helped to defray the cost of technical upgrades. For example, if we don't get the grant on those network switches and we do have at least part of the money in the, in the tech fund, we can use that money that came from a Comcast surcharge to pay for some or all of those needs.
Can I just ask a question? Sorry, Beezy, I just have a quick question. So the users charge, you know, a 5%. This is only those users who are part of the, using the cable, correct?
Anyone who gets cable TV programming from Comcast.
Correct. So it's not everybody in town. It's only the users?
That's right. Mm-hmm. And, you know, that gets, gets Essex about $4,000 a quarter, so about $15,000 a year.
I'll be honest with you, Beezy, it feels like I'm being double charged. I'm a Comcast user, so I'm getting charged that 5%. You know, it's the same, to me, it's like the same argument as the sewer betterment. If I have cable, there are people in town who don't have any, they have internet. They may have it Verizon or something, and they're not paying that. And what about the people now, because I was just at AT&amp;T and they're, they're trying to start selling TV also. So it's like, hmm.
If they try to start selling TV in Essex, then they will have a franchise agreement. And if Verizon comes, they will have a franchise agreement and the town could levy the same kind of fees against, against them. It's something that has been in place. This is now the third one that I'm doing, the third 10-year one that I'm doing. And it was in place prior to that. And it's just a longstanding allowance within the rules that regulate cable TV franchises that up to 5% can be levied. The only way you could back that down would be to say, well, you know, 1623 Studios is not going to get as much money or the town isn't going to get as much money or both. But there is a cap and it's 5%. And normally, the communities want the entire 5% levied. It's a matter of how much goes to the town and how much goes to the local access company. So at this point, we're waiting for 1623 Studios to give us an idea of the types of services they provide to each community, including the number of meetings that they cover for each community on a monthly basis. That will give us an idea of what's being provided. So there's more to come on that. I just wanted to give that update to the board.
Great.
Then we're moving into the annual town meeting warrant draft, another look at it. The board has seen this starting at the last meeting. So we currently have on the warrant, which also serves as the town's election warrant, two possible questions for Proposition 2.5 overrides, money for the Manchester Essex Regional School District and separately for the town municipal government. Moving through some of the basic articles, we would, we would have articles for the two union contracts to fund and implement those, that Articles 4 and 5. Article 6 would be the regular general budget article. Article 7 would be the, the tech. And then we would move into the Manchester Essex Regional School District, which would have the companion warrant article for an override if that's to be, if that's, if that's to be discussed and it ends up on this warrant. And then the regular budget article for the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Then we go into Article 10 with the Personnel Board Report for all of the wages and salaries of the employees. Article 11 is.
Beezy, I want to drop you on Article 10 for a moment. Article 10 is about wage and salary scale. I know that currently we're talking about the town accountant, the town clerk, the fire department. Have, do we have other requests before us beyond those three?
None that I know of coming out of the budget request season.
Okay. So I did mention to Chair Harris that we need to take a look at the harbor master department as well as putting on the radar that if the fire department comes up, we will need to make the part-time police officer wage come up alongside fire.
Okay. So I'll keep that in notes. And the, the selectmen are going to consider the wage and salary scale with explanation of anything that's above and beyond at some future meeting. So, but I will, I'll make those notes. So then Article 11 is wages, wages are compensation for elected officials. Article 12.
Do we have any on Article 11? Do we have any wage and salary scale change requests for elected officers?
No, you just have to approve it every year.
Okay.
Nothing new. It'd be the same.
I just want to make sure there was nothing.
The only ones that do go up would be if there's a COLA granted, the, traditionally, the assessors go up according to COLA.
Okay, thank you.
Article 12 is just repaying the town septic betterment program from money that people paid into the fund. Article 13 is if we need to make adjustments to the sewer budget for fiscal '25. 14 is the fiscal '26 sewer budget. 15 would be fiscal '25 changes to the water budget. 16 is the water budget for fiscal '26. Articles 17 through 21 have to do with Planning Board articles concerning zoning, accessory dwelling units, the floodplain district, density of condominiums, removing the moratorium language with respect to the zoning, the building permit conversion of residential moratorium, residential buffers, clarifying multifamily by right in the downtown mixed-use district. I don't know if the selectmen have any comments on those, but there's going to be opportunity to hear about all those on March 5th at the public hearing. Article 22 would be creating new revolving funds for Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals, allowing them to take money in for applicants, third-party applicants that need advertising done according to rules and laws. And when that money comes in, they're able to pay it right out of the revolving fund, excuse me, pay it right out of the revolving fund to the actual advertiser, like the newspaper. And.
And I have questions on Article 22 before you keep moving on that one. But finish explaining.
We have to set a limit on each one of them as far as throughput in a given year. But go ahead, Ruth.
So a couple of comments. One of the comments is that I was at the Planning Board meeting last week and there was quite a bit of discussion about this revolving fund. And something caught my attention, two, two pieces that caught my attention. The, the clerk made a comment about thinking about what they could spend the money on in this revolving fund. And so at our meeting, when you rolled out this, this potential solution to their advertising, I was very clear to say it would be strictly for advertising. So for me, I want to make sure that this isn't for some other thing that we're not looking for. I'd like to add the word sole purpose. So the word sole would be before the word purpose. So it would read each for the sole purpose of paying advertisers for legal advertisements required for the work of each entity. That's number one. The second piece that was more alarming was that she had mentioned, and these are rough numbers. I know they weren't exact. It was just a conversation. But they're charging applicants $250 for an advertisement that's costing in the vicinity of $375 for, for, say, a public hearing notification. So my question was, so how are we recovering the other $125? And the answer was, we are not. So they are, so it falls to the back of the taxpayer to make up the difference for a public hearing advertisement in the paper for someone's personal project. So I asked where I could find that so that we could make sure we brought that to town meeting for a vote. And apparently, it's in the rules and regulations, which is.
It's not town meeting, exactly.
It's not town meeting. So it's in the rules and regs of the Planning Board.
Right.
And they don't have time to update that just now. So we need to figure out how to capture that applicants are paying for their own advertising. That's an issue.
Well, they have to take a vote and do it. That's, I mean, I can look at it and make recommendations to their chair.
So it, it brings me to the third point, which is that these limits, establishing these, these spending limits, at $12,000, $8,000, and $8,000 seem relatively high. My understanding of a revolving fund was that you set it up in, let's just say, you set it up with $1,000. Then you do a public hearing notice. It costs you 400. So the $400 comes out. It pays the paper and then you recover the money. It goes back in. It's more like a revolving savings account. These numbers feel like the fluff needed to make up the shortfall of poor rules and regulations.
Yeah, if, if the rule, if the rule and rules and regulations don't change to adequately require the applicant to pay, you're going to end up with a problem like that unless you don't put any money into it, right? Then it's not going to sustain itself.
Well, I just, I wonder if numbers like $12,000, $8,000, and $8,000 are much too high. I think where this is, we're just trying it and seeing how it's working. Maybe we should bring those numbers down to 2,000, 1,000, 1,000 and.
That's not, you'd have to go back to town meeting to change it if you go over that. And if it's $350 for an advertisement, that's only two, that's only two items of business in a, in a fiscal year.
I guess my question is why? What's the driver to make these revolving funds? We're handling this today, correct?
Because right now, okay, it frees up money in the general fund. Right now, you have to budget that $12,000. And sure, okay, the people pay the money and the money goes back to the general fund. But if you're budgeting that $12,000, it's $12,000 that hits against our levy, which we don't need. If it's in the revolving fund, it is not anything that is, it's not a budgeted expense, so it doesn't count against our levy. It's, it's a token, right? It's not going to, it's not going to balance your budget, but it's a better way to do it because it's not eating into your levy.
But this is above, I mean, their entire budget for Planning Board is $18,000. I'm confused. Where's the money coming from?
We're being told that there are going to be enough applications now that we're requiring. We're being told that there are going to be enough applications, now that we're requiring special permits for more things, and we've clarified when someone has to have a special permit, there's going to need to be a lot more advertising done. And the budget isn't, the budget they have isn't going to cut that. So my recommendation is to go with the numbers we have here and make sure that the Planning Board, in short order, changes their rules and regulations, and it should be, it should just say that the applicant must cover all costs associated with advertising.
I agree with you, so my question, which is what I brought up in the meeting, is that the language does, should not have a number? It should say that the applicant must cover 100%? So then, the pushback I got was, well, we have, you know, a timeframe in which we have to hold certain, you know, publications and hearings and such. Can it read to just say that your hearing will not be held until it's paid in full?
I don't think so, because the general laws require the Planning Board to act within a certain amount of time. Now, on the other side of that, we could say, there was not a complete application, because, because I guess it wasn't paid.
Could you hold up the building permit? Can you say that the building permit won't be issued until the fees are paid in full?
Hmm, the building permit won't be issued until you go through the process, so that's no good either. The building permit is held up when you need a special permit, and it is held up when you need a variance, et cetera.
Right, but it doesn't link back to the cost of the public hearing notification?
I think this is really easy. I work with the chair to make a change that said, whether it's the ZBA regs or the Planning Board, which is going to be, the ZBA is for variances, um, and it is for, um, appeals, appeals of the building inspector. The Planning Board is for special permits, subdivisions, and I believe now, site plan review, which is another category that didn't have advertising before. Okay, that was a flaw. And the Conservation Commission is generally for notices of intent. I, I can work with all three of those boards to say, this is not a difficult thing. Let's get the language changed to say, you have to bear all costs--
Okay.
--associated with these requirements. And so that when we get to town meeting, the vote can be taken, and people will understand that those, those rules have already been changed, and they can vote for this knowing that it's not going to be a problem. But as far as the throughput, that $12,000 is probably wrong.
Okay, and it, and I like your explanation about it not impacting the levy limit, so that's, makes me feel better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're constantly trying to come up with some high number that impacts the levy limit, and you, only to have the money that comes, that go into the general fund.
Jody had--
So then--
Hang on one second, BZ, we're not done on this article.
So, I guess that I'm just like, okay, you got $12,000, but how many advertisements are you going to do with $12,000? And is it, is there a likelihood? So if you only put $6,000 in there, then--
You don't put money in there, Alva.
You don't put money--
It's a throughput cap, okay? We can open these accounts with zero in there. The only money that goes in is somebody did a Gloucester Times ad. They give us 350, Times bills us, we pay 350 out of that account.
Okay, so we're not asking to-- We're not asking to put money in these accounts--
No.
--beforehand?
Those are throughput limits.
Okay.
Why, why you'd have to have one, I don't know, but for a revolving fund, you have to say that you, the throughput per fiscal year cannot exceed X. And you should shoot high, because if it's too low, now you can't use the revolving fund for anything that's over it. All we're doing is asking someone to pay into it, so that we can use that money to pay in an exact amount, if we write the rules correctly, the newspaper, or whoever you're paying.
Okay. Jody, is that clearing it up?
Well, Ben and I were just saying, that's completely different than how we understood the revolving funds to operate.
I thought we were fronting the money by--
No.
--by putting money into the fund.
That's what I, that's what I thought as well. I thought we were putting money in, Brendan, which is why I was pushing back on these big numbers.
If you're fronting the money, you'd have a levy limit problem again. This is a throughput, it's a cap of the, of the money that can go through, but it's not, it's not your money. It goes from the applicant to the town, and from the town to the newspaper.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
And if you hit--
All right.
And if you hit your limit, and you're three-quarters of the way through the year?
That's why I want to shoot high. It's a problem, because then you have to, you have to probably move money from the reserve fund or some other line item into a budget that you could spend, spend out of for advertising. I don't, it's better to just shoot high. And I'm not even sure these numbers are high enough, but it's only a draft right now.
So Article 23 made it to the warrant, but it's also on our potential items as a second tier? And given the emails that we received today, do you feel that Article 23 should stay second tier at this time?
I think that we're going, even if they have to reapply, we're still going to get somebody who wants to come to town meeting to know whether they're going to get their flow. So I think it should be on here, I think it should move up to tier one.
Okay, so if it stays in tier one, the email we received about the affordable units was a lot of words without a commitment. Are we going to get a written commitment before we allow it to go to the warrant?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
And I think, Ruth, you and I need to, to talk to the proponent there about that.
Okay.
Because they need to, they need to understand what our needs are, so.
Perfect.
Then 24 and 25 are just renewing leases for shays, a portion of land for shays, and for the Legion Hall used by the Historical Society. 26--
I'm sorry, can we go back to 24? Because I just have a question about that, since it is possibly going to be sold. Are we making it, I mean, so say it gets sold and the thing gets torn down? So then, we would--
Then, then the selectmen would not, um, would not renew the lease the next time.
Well, what we did with the village, BZ, is we actually created a new lease with Cormac.
Well, that's not a lease, that's a license.
Oh, that was a license, okay.
Right. This is, this is intended to run for 10 years at a time. So, we could put in the lease itself, it wouldn't have to be in this article, a clause that says, "If the building that's there now is torn down, this lease is null and void."
That was my, I'm like, my thoughts were, well, wait, why would we--
I think, I think we should do that. Brendan, can we alter the language that says that? If the building is sold and removed, then this is null and void?
In the lea, in the lease itself. This is just authorizing you to enter into a lease. It's up to you to determine what you want in the lease. You don't, you don't need to put that in the article. The article's just a general, and, um, it generally enables the selectmen to enter into the new 10-year lease.
Well, it makes sense if the building is removed not to have them re-erect a building on town land.
Right, but what I'm saying is, when we sign this lease with whoever it is, you put that in the lease, that if the building is, you don't have to put it in this article. If you want it in here, I can get it in here.
No, that's fine, we can put it in the lease.
You know what, I, I don't know, though. I, I think it, I want it in the article, because if they, I don't want, he, he shouldn't be selling it. He has a lease right now that says, this area right here is--
The corner of the building.
Yeah. But if they tear it down, and they, if somebody buys it thinking, "I'm going to tear it down, and this is the footprint I get to use," it's not the footprint, since a corner of it isn't on the property.
They can't do that. We're going to enter into a lease with, let's say it's still Greenbow Corporation. We're going to enter into a lease with them, and this new lease is going to say, "If the building is torn down, the lease is null and void." You, you don't need it in the article. If you're going to start putting that type of thing in the article, now we need to start explaining in the article that there's a building on there, et cetera, et cetera. This just says, this is the portion of the land that would be leased. And it's authorizing the executive branch, the board of selectmen, to put whatever they see fit in the lease.
Okay, but it's a 10-year lease that commences on July 1st, 2025. So, will we have an opportunity to revisit that lease? To make sure that this language gets into it?
The lease that, that you, that's already in force expires, and they need to enter into a new lease, and you get to control what language is in there. And if they don't want it, they've got a problem, because now they've got something on our property without a lease.
Okay.
I'm just concerned, because it's been, it's been on a lease since 1848.
Right, but that lease expires June 30th of 2025, so when the new lease comes before us, we can alter it, is what he's saying, is that--
It, it's not been on lease since 1848. That's, that's just referencing when the deed for that property was filed.
Okay. I, he, you know, like, it, I don't know, I just feel like, if he, if he sold it, if I was selling it, I'd say, oh, I've got a lease, I've had it all these years, you know, we have this corner of the building. Making, you know, the assumption versus--
I would say that the minute you get a demo apartment, and you remove that building, it's a change of use, and it goes back through the entire process, and it's no longer pre-existing non-conforming. So it no longer meets the setbacks.
They don't have permission, they, the lease that, that they get is not going to give them permission to build on it anyway, regardless of, regardless of whether they can or can't under zoning. They, they have no right to put it there anyway, because the lease is going to say that.
Can it just be specific to the, to Greenbow?
Uh, Jody's question is, can the lease just be specific to Greenbow? That when they sell it, the lease is dissolved? And that the new owner would need to come for a new lease?
The lease that we currently have has the right to a sign, so long as the selectmen agree to it.
So I guess I'm, I guess I'm just wondering, why are we bothering to put this on, on this article? The lease is up on July 1st. He hasn't, I don't know, has he sold it? Have we gotten any, so--
Been processed, that's our understanding. It might be sold even by the time we get there, and that's why I have the, um, the owner highlighted. But if there's still going to be a building there--
Listen, I'd like to say a restaurant is what I'd like. And they can keep it.
You can go in that direction too, but if there's still going to be a building there, then there needs to be an instrument in place that allows them to have a corner of it on town property.
Okay, Brendan, we can move on to Article 25.
25 is, um, again--
Just another lease.
Leasing out the Legion Hall. 26 would be a penalty for operating a business without a license, a required license. 27 would be one police vehicle to replace an existing vehicle. Um, let's see, we're not going to do the, the bridge one, so that's coming off. Article 28 is the fuel depot that we started to discuss. 29 is pickup truck for the water department coming out of water retained earnings. 30 is a dump truck for DPW, that would come out of free cash. And I can go, the Finance Committee, I believe, has a copy of these, the figures that we know today as well. So we talk about any of these after I'm done. A mower on Article 31 for DPW. 32, um, this would be for additional grinder pumps. We're not going to do, uh, the, the article on disposal of soil that the DPW needs to get rid of, that's going to be done at some other time. 33 is, um, a camera for the outside, at least this would be the starting point, for the outside of the water plant. 34, we could use that Cable Technology Fund for that, by the way. 34 is the, um, Community Preservation article, and they haven't yet, I'm unaware of any projects at this point in time. 35 is if we have to make any changes to the general budget for '25, fiscal '25. 36 is if you have to adjust the Finance Committee's reserve fund. 37 is for unpaid bills in past fiscal year. If you want to go through any of the figures, we can do that. Do you, Jody, you want me to run down what we know?
We, everyone has those in front of them. Does the Finance Committee have anything, questions on the monetary page? Brendan, on the, um, 29 and 30, so 29, I see that it's coming out of the enterprise account, shared for water sewer. The second, number 30, free cash, is that coming out of the general free cash, or their own enterprise fund free cash?
The, the DPW is not the water of the sewer, it's the highway department. They don't have an enterprise fund. Anything DPW comes out of the general fund.
So is that necessary at this time, where they're getting another water sewer truck? Is the dump truck necessary at this moment?
Well, they put a request in for it, which is why I have it on here. And then the Finance Committee, usually, that's whether they think that it's required or not.
Okay. I'm, I'm obviously concerned about the cost coming out of free cash, knowing the large ticket items that we also need free cash for. And then 31, the DPW mower, is that replacing a mower that's getting--
Yep.
--turned in, or is that a new mower?
My understanding, it's a replacement, but again, um, somebody usually from Finance does a liaison with them. If you want, I could get more facts on these.
No, we have a liaison, that's fine.
It's a replacement, it says it's a replacement. Replace an older, right, standing mower with a new one.
Okay, all right, Jody has the language, I'll hear that on Thursday, I'm sure.
I mean, for the Finance Committee, if you go through any of these capital items, and you say, "We don't recommend this," then we don't even need to have an article on it. Um, but, you know, you're meeting soon, you should go over all of this and let us know whether there are any things that you would say. Now, you know what, selectmen, we're not ready for this, don't even have an article on it.
Okay. Do you guys have any other questions on the monetary sheet? No? Alva, did you? No? Okay, so Brendan, we can move on to, um, the Regional Youth Prevention Network grant.
Yep, so this grant is something that, um, is coming through the city of Gloucester, and they're reaching out to other communities in the area. It's to address underage drinking, marijuana use, vaping, and the lack of access to behavioral health supports. Um, it was applied for last year, but it scored just below the threshold to be funded. And so, um, we would like to participate in supporting, uh, supporting the grant, an attempt at this grant again this year.
Great, I will make a motion to authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for this grant. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, Brendan, was there anything that was unanticipated for tonight's meeting?
No, I do not have any other items.
Okay, is there any public comment online? Tina, you're the only one joining us online, do you have public comment?
No, I'm good, thanks, though.
Thank you, Tina. Anybody at the table, public comment? No? Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:52 PM.
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
God, I hate my job.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, thank you so much for joining us remotely, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thank you for allowing me to do this, it's been great to get to know some people down here, so--
Yes.
And then, I'll be back in the office Wednesday morning.
Sounds good, safe travels home.
Safe travels.
See, bye-bye.